And ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have the minutes of the July fifteenth meeting. Well, actually, would you like to take regarding these?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve. Any questions over this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor. Finances. Good morning.
Good morning. So I have three payable warrants, sorry, three payables warrants and a payable warrant. And I'll start with payable warrant sixty-five, and that was for the amount of four hundred thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. And the bigger items on that are the monthly transfer tax, that is two hundred seven thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. The main per's retirement payment, which is seventy-nine thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. And also Central Lincoln County YMCA ARPA funding, and that was thirty-six thousand five hundred seventy dollars and fifty-six cents.
Could we have a motion, please?
Um, move to, well, should we do them separately or?
Yeah, we do each one separate.
Okay. Uh, move to approve the accounts payable warrant number sixty-five for four hundred thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-eight and forty-one cents.
Second.
Move and seconded. Are there any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Move to approve the accounts payable warrant number sixty-six for four hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on this one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Three to zero in favor of that.
And I'll round it out with a move to approve the accounts payable warrant number sixty-eight for thirty thousand four hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor. Pretty quickly.
Payroll warrant twenty-two-five dash fifteen for July twenty-fifth for a total of two hundred seventy thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Over time on this is eighteen thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents, um, which has come down a bit from previous months.
Any, we have a motion?
Move to approve payroll warrant twenty-two-five dash fifteen.
Sect game.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on any part of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Fine.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Ready? It just keeps coming, right? It's a long month, right?
Exactly. Thank you.
You're welcome. And now, hi Sheriff.
Thank you.
We're ahead of schedule.
Thank you.
All right, good morning. Uh, we'll start with our jail count at the jail. It, we're at one-seventy, which is really where the jail count has been for the most of this quarter, at least. The numbers keep going up and down. The Fed numbers go up and down, but the population generally maintains at about one-seventy, one-sixty, one-seventy. So I think that's James just managing the population and getting the most board as we can. Any questions about that? Um, your agenda shows a payment authorization to Motorola Solutions. That was an error in my part. You had actually approved that purchase back in May. So I, I, I guess the, uh, the invoice for that, I plan on bringing that over to Finance with your approval from May nineteenth. So I don't need that to, 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 for you to act on today. I would like you to act on a, um, invoice that, uh, that's going to be coming from Hillside Collision in Waldaburl. Um, that totals, uh, seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and eight cents. Um, that is for repairs to our, uh, unit eight-twenty. It's a twenty-twenty-three board. The story about, well, this is, uh, the ironic story about this is, uh, this cruiser was parked in a, an employee's yard and the employee backed into his own car. Um, so that's, uh, completely covered by his insurance. I have the check right here. I received it in the mail yesterday from the insurance company. Um, and I expect the car will be back in our hands, uh, by Friday. Um, and so it'll be just basically passing the money from the insurance company to Hillside. And I was hoping if we could get that approval today, I would, it wouldn't delay the, the payment Hillside. So it's.
That's quite a dent.
Yeah, well, it's nothing cheap today, Commissioner, unfortunately, you know what I mean? And Scott does a great job, uh, haggling with, uh, insurance companies, you know, they all, you know, bought parts and how to do things and whatever, um.
Well, it's outside now and parked strategically very well to slow people going up and down the hill, you know?
Well, that's, that's a different car.
Oh, it is a different one. Okay.
We have a number of cars over there for all kinds of different reasons.
Okay.
So we, so you'd like a
Like your.
Motion and approval of the seven thousand nine.
Seven thousand nine fifty-one zero eight.
Move to approve the payment to Hillside Collision Center for seven thousand nine fifty-one.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any questions? Jeezy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
How many vehicles are over there now?
Well, we have, that's a good question.
Oh, is it really?
What I'm saying, we have two cars. Well, we have one car over there getting some, um, collision repairs and we have, uh, one or two over there with mechanical issues. It's always, if you drive by there, I will guarantee you, you'll see a car there, at least one every time. We, we have a fleet of twenty-seven, twenty-eight cars. It's just.
Right. But you always have a backup. If one's theirs, there's a replacement.
We have one or two backups available, um.
As long as you don't back up anyway.
Well, as it, as it does happen, apparently, right?
Apparently.
Um, so I bring some, uh, some good news, if I can find it. Here it is. The town of Southport has, uh, reached out to us, um, and inquired about animal control services, um. And, uh, I sent them a proposed contract. They reviewed it, signed it back, and, uh, uh, with your permission and your signatures, um, enter into an agreement to cover, uh, Southport for animal control. This, this contract would be August first till the end of the year, just to keep all the contracts in line with all the ones we, we do now. Um, and I, and we're in the, I sent another one to the town of Edgcombe yesterday. So there's a possibility it could be back here with, with Edgcombe.
Okay, so Southport is new.
Southport is new and Edgcombe would be new.
Oh, what, how many do we, do we not have?
Well, we don't have South Bristol. We don't have Booth Bay. We don't have Monhegan Island.
That's too bad we don't have Monhegan.
You're willing to cover those calls, Commissioner?
I'm sure the, uh, the bears and the moose out there really need to be attended to.
By the ticks.
Yeah.
Well, if we have a motion then to approve, we, one at a time, the Southport.
Move to approve the animal control contract with the town of Southport, mean?
Second.
Move and seconded. I'm assuming, uh, that the, the, are the same conditions.
They're the exact same as all the other contracts.
See where if I can find.
Very last page, I think. Yep.
Yep.
Think we'll vote on that. We got a motion and a second.
We haven't voted yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nailed it.
Aye, so three to zero in favor.
No, not yet. I'll, till the vehicle's done, which should be Friday. I'll look, you know?
Do you want me to take?
If you'd like to look at that.
I'd love to. For a second. I am.
It's not here.
Now, for the.
What this to me?
What the, then?
Sure.
That was Southport. So this is, uh.
I was ready to take it.
It's helping just to duplicate.
Yeah, Southport. Yeah, Edgcombe, Edgcombe.
Oh, I thought we were gonna have an edge.
No, not yet. The second two years today, they're gonna assess it for me tonight.
Right.
Make the chair all the stuff.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. I can get the gun.
So Booth Bay Harbor and Southport, but not Booth Bay?
That's right.
Fair enough.
You're doing now.
That's true. I'll send this Southport.
Perfect. Do you want us to mail it quick?
No, because I worked on it. I've been talking to him. I told him I'd send it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you.
First thing that I have is the purchase authorization for a portion of the mapping for our new CAD system. The way that the mapping works for the new CAD system is to help define the areas where responders will respond to. It needs to be broken out more than just by town because we have several towns that half of their town, if it's in the red zone, these responders come to it. If it's in the blue zone, these folks could come to it. But it's more intricate mapping than what the CAD program comes with initially and what we have for our nine-one mapping. So this is a purchase order for this, um, company. It's called Viewshed. And they are able to design and break out and cut it down as to, um, what needs to be done so it'll be driven. So if there were a call, a medical call or a fire call in a certain area in some of these towns that do that, excuse me, it will be able to populate and have us be able to put into the information as to who would be dispatched to that area.
So it's the difference depending on the people that are, are responding?
Yes, sir. Certain towns, some towns are very straightforward. They have one ambulance service, one fire department, and for their entire region. Others are not, like, we're probably fifty-fifty in the county where certain towns haven't really broken up. Um, so that's why this is necessary to be built into the CAD. And so that's what this purchase order is for, is for this service to help us build these maps, another layer of mapping within what we currently have from our nine-one system.
Does it ultimately make the response quicker? I mean, because you can identify who needs to be where.
It, it definitely will because otherwise there's no way of knowing if it were on, say, Hollywood Boulevard in one of our towns, who goes to that? And so in the midst of taking that call, no one wants to have to pull out the book. And even the book doesn't list all the roads. It just says in the northern part. So then you're like, okay, well, is that above this address? And it would take a lot of manual determination, whereas this would automatically put that address within a certain region. And so then it would tell us who would respond.
Which replacing having to go to doing something that you've been doing manually?
Uh, no, our current CAD system.
It does it.
It, it does it. This is, this is for the new CAD system that we're going to. We've been in the middle of a, of a change in software.
Okay, then this isn't add-on to that.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Any questions?
Nope.
Motion?
Move to approve. Purchase authorization, mapping for CAD software update project.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Three to zero in favor.
And the second thing that I have is the resignation of an employee, Craig Ballston. He has, his last day was August thirty-first, his resignation, uh, July thirty-first, sorry. Um, what came in after your last commissioner's meeting. Um, so, oh, my apologies. That's the, I'm sorry. Um, and so we, I ask that you accept his resignation with regret. He is going to another center and will still be serving in the public safety community.
So was it a planned thing or is it sort of a surprise to, I know that we're trying to get, uh, your department fully staffed and
Yeah.
Now we're, you know, seeing somebody leave, but was that built into the?
Uh, no, it was not.
Oh, okay. So we'll have to work on that replacement, if you will. Okay.
So we need a motion to with.
Move to accept the resignation with regret.
Seconded.
Move and seconded. All, you know, for the, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
So two steps forward, one step back, right? Yeah. You're welcome.
Is this ready to pay? Yes.
What kind of question? What was the cost of the soft, the software upgrades?
Three thousand dollars. And the company's name is Viewshed.
Sounds. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I think, um, we've had some conversation the last week. Um, Homeland Security FY twenty-six was released last week. Um, we only had from Thursday to Sunday to submit an application. Um, however, the terms and conditions of the grant has completely changed. And you, go ahead.
Okay. The Homeland Security Grant is something that we apply for annually. We've gotten some pretty boilerplate agreements over the past many years with, um, this grant. And we use these funds to do specific projects that are outside of the regular county budget. Um, do you know what the amount was? It's like a hundred and
Yeah, it was like a thirty thousand.
Thirty-five thousand dollars. So that number changes annually based on how much gets allocated by the federal government and it's distributed across the counties by population and another formula component that they have. So Emily and I met last week. We worked on the list of priorities that she was going to submit. While she was working on the narrative for that grant application, I dug into the terms and conditions just because you never know what they're gonna slip in. And this year was the, the year that we got a, a surprise in the terms and conditions. One of the sections, under communication and cooperation with the Department of Homeland Security and immigration officials will now require us that we will honor requests for cooperation such as participation in joint operations, sharing of information, or requests for short-term detention of an alien pursuant to a valid detainer. A jurisdiction does not fail to comply with this requirement merely because it lacks the necessary resources to assist in a particular instance. Um, that last part doesn't really apply to us because we do have the ability to have resources available for something like that if we were to agree to these terms and conditions. Um, I had some conversation with the main emergency management agency because this grant, the umbrella of the grant is through MEMA. They get all of the funds and then they distribute it to the locals, which are the counties, who then use it for a variety of projects. So MEMA would, we need to agree to these terms. And every sub-grantee would need to agree to these in order to get the funds. This requirement is contrary to what the sheriff's office, um, policy is. It is contrary to what Two Bridges Jail, their acceptance of federal inmates is. And I didn't, with good faith, think that we could apply for these grant funds, knowing that we were going to be required to fall within those terms and conditions. It's.
Well, this is a totally new
It is.
Program.
It is.
Far, far as we're concerned with these emergency.
I, I've never had an experience where our emergency management agency was now going to be required to be part of the immigration enforcement arm of the federal government. We do homeland security grants for community resiliency to prepare for disaster and to be able to recover from disaster. Not to worry about immigration law. That's not what we do. We don't have those specialties. We don't have the appetite to, to really battle into that water. So I let MEMA know what we were thinking and, uh, we, in the end, got your, um, input on that and did not apply for the funds. MEMA has since reached out to us to make sure that it wasn't an error in not submitting because, um, we don't have a, Emily doesn't have a lot of experience behind submitting the grant application. They wanted to make sure it wasn't a technical glitch. And I made it very clear to them that it was a philosophical decision of the county not to apply and to be governed by those terms.
So does the state agree to those terms too and then reaches out to the counties?
So.
What is that interaction?
If this holds as it is currently, the state would need to agree to these terms in order to get the funding because the federal government can retrieve the money from them. They are allowed to claw it back. What MEMA has advised us is that the Attorney General's Office is contesting these terms along with other states. But it's a new grant. It's not an extension of a previous year under a previous administration. So the new administration, they've gotten a lot of leeway so far and they, they have the opportunity to put their own language into these agreements.
It is futile to ask for waivers or exceptions from their grant program to say, can you remove that? So.
If the, if the state doesn't, i- if they're not successful,
They're not, okay.
Then they'll need to make that decision on whether or not they're going to uphold these requirements. There's other new requirements in the back that specifically address, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion. Uh, those weren't part of the policy that we have in place. Uh, so I didn't even delve into those because the, the page four was a non-starter for us to start with.
Did they say initially that, or in the, in the thing, or do you have to really dig to find out that, that we were going to be working with ICE?
Uh, I didn't know about it until I read it.
We were not made aware of until the grant was released.
And the state knew about it.
Oh, previously, yeah. You weren't involved with, with a little training in, in ICE?
No, no. And the state didn't point it out to us either when they distributed.
No, they didn't. Yeah. It was, again, it was, and it was a very short turnaround. It was, it was from Wednesday to Thursday or, or Thursday to Sunday. So everybody's kind of quickly applying for these funds. And I, you know, I can't guarantee that they even read through.
Yeah, they concentrate their effort on the application and not on the.
If they're not thinking it's gonna change from year to year, but this year it did. So thank you for reading it. Does that, um, well, were you gonna use the funds? How critical were the items that you were gonna purchase with those funds?
There was some that definitely, um, are huge benefit. Um, the sheriff's department was looking for a true narc system, um, which, from what I read, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, ran, it's to help with testing chemicals and different drugs. And I, from my understanding, there's one regionalized, but there's not one specific in Lincoln County. Um, we were also applying for replacement funds for the tower generators, um, which are old and outdated and be an intricate part of what we do during disasters, during acts of terrorism, um, and so on and so forth. So there were a couple of projects in there that were going to be really intricate and it's not a huge loss, but a, long-term it will be.
So this will likely impact the next grant that gets released by MEMA, which is our EMPG grant, that those funds traditionally have gone towards offsetting the cost of our staff in the EMA office partially. Um, I'm expecting very similar language in, in those terms. And down the road, when we have our next Operation Stone Garden grant, we'll expect to see it there because that's specifically mentioned in here as well. So if anything changes, we will keep you updated, but that's where we stand today. And, um, I did let all of the other counties know. I reached out to all of my peers just so they were made aware of this ahead of the Sunday application deadline. I have heard back from a handful of them, but not everybody has replied.
Well, I hope they all follow our example. Put it aside.
I know that there's different philosophies out there, but I had to do what was right for us.
Ultimately, you're right, is that this is a homeland security stuff. We're not in the business of doing immigration and now they're mixing the two.
Right.
Without giving us a heads up.
In, in first direction, well, indefinite period.
Right. Uh, but I am concerned that, uh, you know, we, about things that we can't purchase now and, uh, you know, if there is a need, how we're going to meet that need in the future, especially if these grants are gonna go away. Um, while we hope that, uh, the Attorney General can do what he can do to sort of get that off the contracts, but I suspect that it's gonna not be effective because of what the federal government wants. It's their money. Yeah. All right.
Questions?
Do you want a motion on that?
No, I just wanted to let you know that we were going to come ask for your permission to apply for this, but the terms have changed.
And that's different from the next, uh, grant on that.
Sure. About the next grant, um, this is also a federally aligned grant and, um, nobody has said yes or no, but in conversation, it just, it's, it feels that we're gonna have the same terms and conditions under this grant as well.
It's sort of sandwiched in with everything then?
I, I would imagine so. I think it's just gonna take thoroughly reading everything that comes out for us.
So this is a way that the feds try to get support for, in all areas.
In every state because this is funding that goes to every state. It goes to the state level emergency management and then it gets distributed locally.
Well, keep looking for those grants that aren't, uh, aren't conditioned on such depressing, uh, requirements.
It's gonna be different. And, and I was honestly planning on not receiving any of these grants with the. It's gonna be different. I'm, and I was honestly planning on not receiving any of these grants with the way that they were talking about. Not even allowing us to have funds or FEMA going away. So. We've already been setting ourselves up to be prepared for not receiving any money.
And possibly putting that in your next budget.
Yep.
For those.
Yeah, I had, my, had already submitted my draft budget before these grants came out. So. I was planning my budget based off of not receiving any funds.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good mornings.
Um, my name is Alex Zaparo and uh, I'm the economic and community development planner at the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission.
And good morning commissioners. My name is Curtis Brown. I'm the land use and transportation planner for Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission. Um, so as stated in the um agenda, we're here to talk about um. An RFP for our DECD Housing Opportunities uh Program Grant Implementation. So I'm just gonna give you a little bit of background on how we got here. A little louder. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Um. So this grant, as stated, is funded by the DECD Housing Opportunities um Program. So we're focusing on um expanding housing infrastructure for Lincoln County. Um, so this grant built off of our housing needs assessment, which was released in uh twenty twenty-three. Um, which had a, which included a matrix of strategies and action items for future housing expansion across Lincoln County. So earlier this year, we released our priority sites inventory for affordable housing, which was one step of that matrix. And then this grant process will be another step in that matrix. Um, so the goal of this grant is to produce a feasibility study and funding strategy to expand sewer and water infrastructure. Um, on selected sites that can be shared with developers to help lower the cost of building housing, housing here in Lincoln County. Um, to support this work, D uh DECD Housing Opportunities Program has provided one hundred and forty thousand dollars in funding. Um, there is a ten thousand dollar match requirement for this grant, which will be made in kind by Alex and I's hours. Um, Alex and I's staff time. Uh, we began this process by meeting with utility districts across Lincoln County. To ensure that they were on board with this process. And then we invited municipalities to submit a letter of intent. Um, with priority parcels um for consideration for this grant process. And I will pass it off to Alex to um speak about the next steps.
Thanks Curtis. Um, so that brings us to where we are today. Um, you all have an RFP before you. Um, as part of that, uh, those conversations with towns. Uh, we were able to ascertain a list of priority parcels that they'd like to look at, which you'll find in appendix A of that RFP. Um, you know, after you approve of this RFP, uh, we will go ahead and. And solicit proposals for engineers to conduct the feasibility um study and funding strategy. Once we have selected that uh engineer through, we'll have an internal review process. Uh, we'll come with you uh with the suggested engineer for your approval in the September meeting. Um, and we expect to start the work with the engineer in the fall. Uh, with the work being completed in August of twenty twenty-six, so next, next August. Um, at that time, we'll have a feasibility study and a funding strategy in place. Um, to extend water and sewer, um, to have sort of sketch plans. Um, and cost calculations for extending water and sewer to those identified parcels in. Um, the towns of Damascata, Newcastle, Wisconsin, Walterboro. Um, and through this process, we will work with towns and utility districts um very closely. Uh, so. We, we asked that you approve the, the RFP before you.
So it would um just be the properties that the towns identify or would it include all of those? Properties in the inventory that said there's no hookups. Cause it seemed like that should be the minimum and then add more to what the towns identify other properties. It seems like, cause. If you have already identified developable properties, um, they just need the water sewer. That would make a natural link. I would think to the study.
Yeah, sure. Um, the, um, the, the parcels that were identified in that study. Um, oftentimes did include water and sewer, so um, many of them uh had water and sewer. We did, we did ask the towns to. To consider the properties that were listed in that um study. Um, and you know, based on different priorities in towns because they, we, we believe they know best. Um, the parcels in which they, they suggested prioritize in the letter of intent process. Um, some of them were part of that, that study. Um, and some of them, some of them weren't because other properties were a priority for them.
But they're saying that those properties are developable. If they're saying that that's a priority or they want it to be included in the study. Um, there's gotta be a reason obviously for the extension.
Yeah, and oftentimes in, in that study, we really focused on properties that had water and sewer. So a lot of the properties in that study are already had water and sewer extensions.
I thought they were limited only a hand.
Not all of them. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, I think we did a pretty good job of getting a mix of what the towns prioritized that didn't fall into that category and the ones that, that did.
Well, I know that, you know, it's a major challenge for developers and if a property has the water sewer hookup that. Um, takes a big burden off the developer and makes it a more feasible project. So.
Absolutely.
This makes a lot of sense and.
Move to approve the RFP for DECD Housing Opportunities Program Grant.
Second. Moving second to approve the RFP. Project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Keep us informed. And when we think about that. Then we'd be coming out. To keep ICE inmates. That's, that's a hell of a nerd. Just a slider. And by the way, do you know, take the money or not?
What should we start with?
Entroduce yourself. Hi, I'm Abby. I work in the district attorney's office. I think I've been in front of you all before asking for um. Budget to go uh to different trainings.
What's your role?
Victim witness advocate um in the district attorney's office. I've been there four, four and a half years.
So I met with Abby and our deputy district attorney, Kent Mertik. About the vacant position that it was created when. Former office supervisor slash paralegal resigned and took another position. So what we discussed was an opportunity to restructure the job duties and then. Move some of the duties around to different positions within the office. And Abby's done a lot of work to give us something to consider with that process. Um, so what is being suggested is. That we take one of our two victim witness advocates. And reassign some of the office supervisor duties to that position to make it more of an office coordinator. This person wouldn't supervise employees, but they'd be uh in charge of. Um, managing schedules and making sure that the workflow. In the office was being assigned and addressed efficiently and oversimplifying that and um. We looked at the job descriptions and we also looked at adding a couple of um duties to the. Other victim witness advocate position. And then taking the office supervisor and splitting it. From the paralegal duties. At one point in time, we had the paralegal as a standalone position. We combined that with the office supervisor. Now that it's vacant, we're looking to make that change back to a paralegal. So at this point in time, if you approve this. Approach, the paralegal is the position that is vacant, that we would need to post. And you've already given us permission to post it as a, a joint office supervisor and paralegal, but we would need to. To get permission on the job descriptions and to, to post that as a standalone. Um, we'd also be looking at uh making some changes to the. Job duties of the legal secretaries. We've had some changes in. Uh, responsibility within the office. So we now are. Very active in drug court. We're now very active in. Working with firearm.
Possessions restriction orders.
So those duties were addressed in these job descriptions and I've. Restitution. Uh, so. Right now, when we take restitution in on a case. In order to enforce that restitution, we need to have a, a strong. Oversight on it. And then one of the components of that oversight that we don't capture. Currently that we could is to garnish. People's tax returns to the state of Maine. If they have a tax return coming back and they owe restitution, if they haven't been paying, we have an opportunity to get it in order to. To retrieve those tax return funds from them. So I'd like to explore that so that we can get the, the. Restitution payments to the victims in a more timely manner. Uh, so we've got some drafts. I've sent these to our district attorney and. Um, asked for input on. A little bit of the reporting structure and to make sure that the recommendations on the job duty changes are satisfactory. So I don't have a final draft for you to consider, but I'd like permission to move forward with splitting that. Paralegal position back to a standalone, posting that. And then continuing on with these job description changes.
First to split it. That's what, a motion to split. And then we, we don't have the particulars of the next step. Is that correct?
Not finalized. I'd like Natasha to have some significant input on this so that we can make sure that what we're capturing is really what her vision is for those positions as well. So they, I, I just sent them to her yesterday, late, yesterday afternoon. So she has not had time to, to take a look at. And, and.
She's in jury obsolescence right now.
So I might have missed it. It's just to split. The duties and rearrange sort of, or reconstruct. Um, restructure various positions, not to add positions, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we'd like to post that paralegal position, even though the job description is final, it'll give us that process of. Of going through it. And we do have our former paralegal job description to work off of. It hasn't changed that drastically. But I'd like to get this process moving so that we can get that position filled.
I think you're on the right process, cause I would assume a paralegal wants to do paralegal work, not necessarily be a supervisor. As well. So separating that out maybe opens it up to more uh interest in the position. Um, somebody really wouldn't want to be supervisor, but they want to do the paralegal work. Yeah. And that'll come. In the next month?
Next meeting. We're that close to being complete.
Just need the DA to review. So we need a motion to. I, I move to ask the county administrator to continue with the process of reviewing the job descriptions and. Of the paralegal supervisor position and other positions within the district attorney's office.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero in favor. So the next, uh, next meeting will take the.
You'll have final job.
Final, final.
And we'll post the job in the meantime, the paralegal position to get that.
I think getting that out sooner than later is good to fill it.
Yeah, we should be able to do that if not today, tomorrow, I believe.
Super.
And while Abby's here, could we address the outstanding restitution? She's getting updated for you.
Looks like a good update.
It's a good update.
Yeah.
So an order on payment of restitution um was signed. Um, the uh justice billings is requiring that the defendant Aaron Morgan be responsible for uh making payments of twenty dollars a month. Um, starting when he is released from Department of Corrections uh on January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, if that restitution uh order is not to be followed, starting um on that January date, then um. Motions to enforce could be filed at that time, but uh they have, um. They have made it clear that they do plan on paying that once he's released from Department of Corrections.
So this is a year from next year.
Current, yeah.
And I assume there's no interest paid straight. You know, the eight hundred dollars listed is what he pays back. So the county has to float it until he's out of jail.
Unfortunately. Um, there is hope um with further training in our office that we can work on um garnishing, uh, as Carrie mentioned, um. Tax returns. Some offices I believe are exploring uh garnishing wages as well. I know the prison um does have. A work program and I know that could be an option um potentially down the road, but there does need to be more uh training and transparency on that.
Can you build that into like a consent to levy property into the restitution orders or? Is that something that we just have to do as a side thing? The court wouldn't order that necessarily?
Now, that's a great question that I don't necessarily have the answer for, but I, I could definitely check with deputy um district attorney Mertik and see if that's an option.
Anything that makes it easier for us to, you know, have some security and knowing that it's gonna come in. Or a way to attach property to get it earlier uh would be beneficial.
Good, good to see some resolution.
That's uh better than what it was. And then so we just have to, the money comes in, we pay ourselves, correct?
So we have this on our accounts receivable. It will stay as an active. Asset for us.
Right.
Asset.
Would it show up on the AP report then if, you know?
Oh, that's a payable. So.
That's right. Okay, so it's.
This is, this will be a receipt.
Just as we have it as a receivable, when it comes in, we just reduce that. Okay.
It would be tracked and as he makes payments, we'll reduce that receivable.
Well, hopefully honors the uh order, yeah. We can move that off the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Okay, next item is the paid family leave self insurance plan policy. This is a whole lot of technical jargon. And that was. Formed around a template that we received from the Department of Labor. We would like to establish our own self insured private plan. For paid family medical leave. And this is a result of the, the new law that went into effect as of January first where employees. Are able to apply for this benefit in May of twenty twenty-six. If they so choose, we'd like to administer it in-house. And what that will allow us to do is instead of making quarterly payments to the state. So this, uh, one of our warrants today was our last quarterly payment of eighteen thousand dollars. Instead of making those payments to the state, those funds will go into a reserve account specifically for this program. And then they'll get replenished as they're drawn down from May twenty twenty-six, if they're used. If we have enough funds in there that we have the minimum amount established by the state, we don't need to continue to replenish, but as they. Draw down, we do. This draft, after you approve. The draft needs to be submitted to the state for their approval. We have to continue submitting quarterly payments to the state until they accept. Our plan and they allow us to implement our plan.
Essentially at about the same rate?
We would establish the reserve account at the same rate, yes. It's based on gross wages per employee every payroll. But if you look at a quarter, about eighteen thousand dollars is that quarterly amount. In essence, what this will give us is a reserve account that will earn interest. That if we don't use all of it in a year, we don't have to replenish all of it in a year. And then that helps us to, to maintain some stability within our own expense line. If we send those eighteen thousand dollars to the state and none of our employees draw on this plan. The state keeps that money. And we don't get a a credit or reimbursement of those funds, it just goes into the pool.
So this is our money.
What happens to the funds that we've already paid, does that come back to us, or is that a donation to the state or?
This point, it's a donation to the. If we get approved.
Okay.
However, I know that there are some employers, I believe Main Health and B I W. Have taken this to court because they'd like those dollars returned to them for their own pool, for their own self.
Because they create a plan similar to this, okay, yeah.
It's it's a lot of work to put one of these together, and if you don't have the right mix of staff ability in your office, it's very hard to implement. But. This is not a heavy lift for us, we we can set up that reserve account, we process. Uh, family medical leave applications now, we handle uh applications for income protection plans. It's not. It won't be that difficult for us.
Some employers are go- are not going through the state system, but are hiring insurance companies or something to that. That doesn't give us any advantage, or going that route doesn't give us any advantage.
You would pay less than what you pay the state, because generally those rates are less than the one percent that the state is requiring. You pay, but you're still paying the insurance company, if you don't use it, you don't get that money.
So if we keep our. Employees healthy and. Coming into work, then we don't pay out anything.
And we're already budgeting for year round salaries for our employees anyways, so even if they were to go out on medical leave. And we would have to replenish those funds. We would offset the savings from salary to the planned contributions.
Uh, for sure, matter of record, we need to have a motion to approve this.
So this is a large document that's full of. A whole bunch of technicalities, if you'd like to review it, I I would encourage you to review it. Uh, I reviewed it several times, Michelle has, I put the final drafts in. There's a couple of dates that we need to specify, if the state approves this, we'll need to update it with dates. But if you're comfortable with the draft. Then I would like to have a motion to accept the draft and submit it to the state. And then if they approve it, it would come back to you as a final document to approve with the final dates.
Are they generally um approving plans like these, or are they? I mean, do you, have you seen what they've been receiving? Uh, actually, I'll back up is that, I understand the state has been giving guidance to. Uh, employers who wanted to submit plans like this, so um if. Were using their state guidance, it's likely that they're going to approve our plan, right?
We did not deviate much from this.
Okay.
We put our own terminology in there, but.
Okay.
That was just specific to our own agency, it wasn't anything to to decrease benefits or anything like that.
So we need to have just a.
Just a motion to do, and to if we approve this today, then we potentially can avoid another payment that may or may not come back.
Possibly.
Okay. Move to approve the um. Draft plan as final, the main paid family and medical leave act, self insured private plan as presented in the agenda pack.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. You wanna add anything more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three to zero in favor.
The next item I have has a confi- confidential component of it. Uh, but I need to have a an actual vote on the record to be able to accept this. So this is a result of documentation that I received from the. Legal counsel that is representing us in the opioid opioid settlement. Fund process, they've. They've secured funding from Lincoln County and a variety of other municipal agencies around the state of Maine and. In other areas of the country. We've got a. Settlement money coming in for the next twenty years, I believe it is, in total amount so far has been about one point four million dollars. Over that whole time span, not all at once. Uh, there's a new. Uh, defendant in the case that is ready to be. Approved as settlement agreement. And I need permission to act on behalf of Lincoln County to accept. Their proposal so that we can move forward with being part of that settlement. If it goes through and if we get. Funding from this, I can bring that back to you in an open session so that you know what those amounts are, who the defendant is in the process. But I need permission to sign the. Authorization to vote via master ballot regarding the. Bankruptcy action required in September. I'm sorry to be so vague, it's just. Because it's a confidential document at this point.
Legal counsel is advising.
Legal counsel is advising that we accept the terms as presented.
Move to um. Authorize the um. The participation in the opioid settlement uh agreement as advised by legal counsel.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor? Aye. Three to zero in favor.
Next item, you should have in your packet, a. Decision on the tax abatement appeal hearing that we held on July fifteenth. And that was for. The petitioners, David Gilstrom and Dale Gilstrom in Whitefield, and it was against obviously the assessors of Whitefield. And. I distributed the draft of the decision, and we made a few. Adjustments to that draft, and what you have is.
Move to accept the um tax abatement appeal decision as. Um, written in, provided in the agenda pack.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Do you have a formal copy that we sign, or do we just sign one of these?
Actually, if you. If you could sign all three of them. And then we'll keep one, we'll send one to each parties. Next up is a purchase authorization for purchase five cruiser laptops. These aren't traditional laptops or tablets like we use in an office, these are, they're called tough books. They have a rugged exterior and they have. Extra rugged interior components to the the laptops, they're mounted in cruisers, we leave them in there. They capture. I believe they're capturing, they. You know, I'm not gonna say that I don't believe that's true. They're um accessing our computer aided dispatch network so that they can see the calls that are going out. They can access uh driving records. They can. Complete accident reports onsite in their cruiser, and I believe that they can be removed from the cruiser and taken into the. Office that they need to. Uh, so these are, these are the laptops that we have been purchasing for. Would say eight or nine years, maybe longer. And we get the state pricing through the company that we use, they. They all honor this G S A in state pricing. Uh, so the total amount for five tough books. Including the warranty and the power car power adapter is thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty dollars. We have an IT reserve account that covers the cost of these. So this is a a. Typical purchase for us, the amounts that we purchase annually flexually. Last year we purchased four, this year we're looking to purchase five. And they replace. Eight out of units.
I move the uh authorization of the purchase of five cruiser laptops for thirteen thousand eight twenty.
Seconded.
And then I um. Have a couple of questions to um. Is there any tracking, or I I I assume they're being used? Is that correct, okay?
Every day they're on shift.
Very, okay, because it's it seems like um. There's a lot of calls into dispatch I hear, you know. The dispatcher's looking up drivers' records or whatever, but that could, they could do it on their laptop, is that where you? If they have connectivity, okay.
So there's certain areas of the county, I know by my house. My cellphone doesn't work because I don't have connectivity, so if they don't have that connectivity.
Can call.
Then they can call in on the.
Okay, um, but doing paperwork. That's very helpful, okay?
They can do, they can go to a location. And be in that area when they're like, if they're on the east side zone, they can be in the zone that they're assigned to and still do. Reports that they they have to get done, they don't have to come back to the office to do their.
But to print the reports, they would have to. Pull it out of the vehicle and. Take it in.
They would, but I think a lot of this is done.
Just all electronically, okay.
It transfers on to the next, to the sergeant to be approved.
And um, this is, I think I heard you say, just part of the regular plan that every year you replace four or five. Out of the many. Cruises we have.
It's replacing a cruiser.
Right.
Not only are you replacing the car and the equipment in it, but the computer gets replaced.
And is it like a three year or five year rotation, basically?
I think they're four.
Four, okay. Great, that's all I have for questions.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
How hot is it in here?
A little toasty.
I think it's pretty quiet up there.
Yeah, now that the jury's been put away, then. Probably quieter. Thank you very much.
Send them an email.
Does it take long for those to come, or does it, once you order them to? Yeah, yeah. And does, does somebody have to configure them, or are they just right into the vehicle?
So Karen at the sheriff's office, that's part of her job duties, she handles a lot of the computers that they.
So we don't have to outsource that, okay, good.
And whatever Karen Karen can't do, then Micah from Burgess will help with.
Perfect.
So I received an email from. Andrew Lardy from Tedford Housing in Brunswick. Two weeks back, asking if I would meet to talk about homeless services. And the needs in Lincoln County. I reached out to our community navigators at C L C Y N C A to get some context as to how much the need there is. And there's definitely a presence of need in Lincoln County. And currently, that's being addressed through the Economic Coalition of Homeless Prevention. At um. The Congregational, yeah, Second Congregational Church in Newcastle. So uh after I had that information. We, Andrew and I set up a date, I went to Tedford to see what their like, location is like and be sure more about what the services are that they're providing. And he asked questions about how they can better serve the the residents of Lincoln County. It's kind of limited right now because of the locations of their facilities. But they're in the process right now of building. A new facility in Cook's Corner, so it's a little bit closer than the the Brunswick. Let's lay them out closer, to Lincoln County. Um, but he also wants to connect with both of our navigator programs so that they can get referrals directly from those navigators for. Um, services. And they have a ribbon cutting scheduled in November, they. Andrew's already invited both of the navigators to that, so hopefully we can get more of a. A known presence of Tedford and Lincoln County services that they provide. I did tell him that it would probably be beneficial for him to come talk about the program and and let the commissioners know what's. Available to our residents, and um he asked about. How the county budgets are developed, he's talked to Cumberland, Andrew Scoggan and Saginaw counties already. So we're not the first person, or first door that he's not been on asking for funding. But they have a pinch just like everybody else out there right now, so they're exploring all the options they have. While also trying to expand services to us. So I told him that I would let him know about our conversation and um. We'll be working. To secure a time when he can come. Have a face to face with you.
So he's gonna have, put in an application to our budget?
He may, I I explained what the process is, I also told him that it's not a guarantee that he'll get funding, but. They'll get no funding without an application, so. He's likely going to put together some kind of a request, even if it's just a minor one to get himself into that process. Uh, we did also receive. An application for funding for the budget from. Elder care network, we've received one from them in the past, and they've submitted one for this budget cycle. So what we've typically done is every application that we get, we include in the draft. And let people know that that doesn't mean that you're guaranteed to get funding, it's just to give the budget committee an opportunity to discuss. What's being requested and let them decide whether or not they want to keep it in there and fund it for you.
Back to Tedford, um. My understanding of them is that uh would be helpful to have um. Uh, the person come and to explain what the uh organization does, because my perspective is that they were just a shelter. So are they planning to build a shelter in Lincoln County to serve Lincoln County, or are they suggesting that? People need shelter would leave Lincoln County and go to Cook's Corner and use their. Sheltering services, if you will.
I'm sure that he would love to build a shelter here, but it all comes down to fund.
Right.
It's. The need here isn't as strong as the need elsewhere, he he showed me the the data that. Showed where the referrals were coming from, which municipality and. A very large number of those folks were coming directly from Brunswick. So being in Brunswick is. The perfect place if the need is in Brunswick, but not all of them came from Brunswick, and some of that may be because of. Transportation challenges, uh, some of it may be need, I. I couldn't really be an expert on that, but um. I I think he wants to be better for the whole mid coast region, and he's looking for partners that can maybe work on that. As we go forward.
So we're, he's gonna come in and speak with us.
Yeah, I'll I'll schedule a time, um, I told him asking for money isn't the first time to introduce yourself to the board. You should do that face to face ahead of us, so. Okay, I have an invitation for next week's broadband community celebration. This is being hosted by Bidium Fiber, they are the partners that we've been working with over the last many months. To expand broadband across the remaining sections of Lincoln County that weren't previously captured in projects. They're having a celebration to kick off the the network that they're. Already turning on, it'll be Thursday, August fourteenth at the Wiscasi Community Center at five thirty. It's free, the public is invited, everybody is encouraged to attend, bring a friend along, there'll be a band. And food. And food and swag from Fidium and so I'm promised there's going to be some fabulous prize drawings. So. I have flyers if you're interested and I would highly encourage everybody to attend. They'll be playing the video that they created. By interviewing several people in our community. Uh, we had some folks from our broadband committees. Talk about the project and what it was like to get this extension and of service to their community and their their neighborhoods. And they interviewed Evan and me and they're putting together a short little. Uh, project summary by video.
This includes. Almost all the towns in.
It includes.
In in Lincoln County.
County towns.
Yep.
Plus Woolwich.
Th- there's one, one to be missing, wouldn't there?
Well, there are other projects in the other areas of the county, but this pro- specific project is just for ten.
Are are those um towns not served by else um L C I or?
Correct.
Okay.
Waldaborough, Northern Nobleboro, Whitefield, Southern Alma, Wascassit. Northern two thirds of Westport Island, Edgum, Booth Bay, Blue Bay Harbor, Southport.
Dresden.
Dresden. Don't let me forget about Dresden. And then Woolwich is the one out of county town. That participated.
Westport Island wasn't part of the original proposal, but they picked up part of.
They built a good chunk of Westport.
And they're an I S P or did they, are they municipally owned?
No, these are all private. This is all private through Fidium, which is consolidated communication.
Okay, I get it.
How about Somerville?
Somerville is still their municipally owned project.
Project, yeah.
Yep, so this this celebration is just for the Fidium grant. That was the six million dollar grant. That the county got from Main Connectivity Authority to hook up the remaining towns that I just mentioned.
Something worth celebrating.
Yes.
Yes, yes. It it took many partners. Uh, we've got other I S Ps in Lincoln County that helped us through this process to get to the point where we had. Just this portion of towns left and. This is the the culmination of a lot of years and a lot of hard work for many people.
Correct. So yeah, please come. We're trying to run them out of food.
Okay, so with the next item that we haven't addressed yet is the L C T V proposal. You asked me to find out if there's been municipal interest. I reached out to Larry. I have not heard back from him about that, so I'm going to. Make an assumption that. Based upon some of the municipalities that have been removing this from their town budget, that. I don't think that they would be in favor of this, but Larry hasn't confirmed that with me at this point.
And you weren't able, obviously, to confirm that they're even working towards that or if they've just abandoned.
We communicated about invoices, but not. They didn't give me any answers of questions at all. I do have good news on the public safety building project. We had a site visit. Last week with our consultants, Sheriff Bracken and I. Put on our walking shoes and went to. We were originally planning on three front properties. We visited those three. Uh, we picked up two more that we decided to add on to. And then we did a drive by, passed some other properties that were on the original list. Some had been excluded. Some were pretty far out in our our territory that we were looking at, but we. We spent a few hours walking properties, looking at topography and. There's a lot of ledge in Lincoln County. Uh, so we had a a good day. There were um some properties on that list that have now been taken off the list. Because the topography just will not support what it is that we want. Um, for example. One property, when you look at the map. It looks like it's nice and flat by the road, but in reality, you pull in off the road and you go straight up. And then you have to go up some more. And then once you're up here, then you can clear all of that land. To be up on almost like a mountaintop, which didn't feel like the right fit for us.
But did the consultants join you too? So, okay, so that definitely.
Absolutely. They were, in fact, they were walking even more than we were.
Okay.
So we we've done that walkthrough. The property list is with our planning office right now. They're doing the regulatory analysis. And mapping for each one of them. And uh, we're moving forward. I I think we have a good possibility. And uh, once we get that regulatory analysis back, then we'll be looking at having a conversation with. Property owners.
That analysis would tell us that we have to go to the planning boards and. Check off some boxes or something like that.
Hands to what that process looks.
What did it? Okay, yeah. So basically the next step, planning.
Yeah. Questions like, is there water and sewer and what are the D O T regulations and all of those technical components of this?
Is there a timetable for that?
I would expect the planning regulatory analysis back. Maybe by the end of next week, the following week at the latest.
Okay.
They've had it and I, in fact, after our our walkthrough, I said, these are the ones that go higher on the list and these are the ones that you can settle. So they grab that scope now. Yes, mission updates.
Let's see, Coastal County's Workforce Board will be having their Board of Directors meeting on August fifteenth, Friday at eight forty five A M. And the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission Board of Directors meeting, which will be a hybrid in person and on Zoom, will be Tuesday, August nineteenth at six P M. At the Planning Commission. Those are my updates.
Just um, I represented the commissioners at the ribbon cutting ceremony at sixteen Mills Road in Newcastle. The governor was there. There were um, our legislative, um, state legislative delegation was there. Um, also the chair of the um legislators housing committee was there to join us. Some of the, or at least one candidate for governor was there. Um, so it was a a good event and the feedback that I got that there was a lot of appreciation for the county involvement. And that, so glad that we had the opportunity to be present at that celebration um. And moving that forward and looking forward to see if Newcastle has other needs from the county that in that area that we can help with. Aside from that, just again, I saw that um we were still planning for the convention and glad that everybody's going to be. Present there and representing this county. But that's all I have for this time.
We do have some departments that have asked to attend.
Nice. We don't have a golfer that is going to put a team together, is he?
Belver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody who, okay, yeah. Evan is, was working on a team once, but I took one of his members and said no. Out of the rotation.
Okay, so.
For that.
I do have an executive session for discussion of real property in one M R S A four oh five six C.
Move to enter executive session, one M R S A four oh five six C.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.